Go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Barstown City Council on May 8th at 7:00. So we'll go ahead and get started. I know we have a few people here for one of our next items on the agenda. Have any guests here that want to address the council this evening? How do you think they're ready for us? Yes?
I'd like to say a couple of things about the dead buried animals ordinance.
Nick, would you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, Nick Kipper, live on North Third Street. I'm well aware, and everybody that's interested in this issue is well aware, this council is not going to address that. There's a couple of points that I'd like to make based on the discussion, my impression of the discussion that I missed, and the reporting on it in the media, that I'd like to just clear the air on or clear the record on. First of all, the draft ordinance was not just written by some guy on North Third Street. We had a lot of input from the community. We had a lot of input from Robbie Smith at the extension office, Dr. Lori Gartnovich at the University of Kentucky came and met with us, with our group, and in developing that ordinance on urban agriculture. That was way back in 2016. I think Larry Green from the city attended that. Fred Hagan, who was on the council at the time, attended that. There's been a couple of workshops since then that many of you all were at that was addressing, or just a discussion of microagriculture countywide. So a lot of you all were at that. A lot of this ordinance grew out of that. So, you know, I didn't necessarily like the impression that came away from that meeting that this was some unworkable ordinance that would never be any good, no matter what you did to it. The other thing I would like to really zero in on is the nuisance aspect. And the nuisance section of that ordinance is cut and pasted, literally, from the existing nuisance ordinance. From my front porch, any day of the week, I can hear kids playing, I can hear people playing radios, I can hear 11 different dogs. I don't know how much fur and feces those dogs produce, but I will say, a reasonable reading of that ordinance say that none of those things are violations. And the reading of that ordinance, or that language that flew with this council at your all's discussion last Monday, was that if it could be hurt off the property, it's a violation of the ordinance, and would be a nightmare for our part-time enforcement officer to deal with. And, of course, the big question there is, why are none of these other things nightmares? Why are we applying a different standard to this activity than we apply to anything else? And if it is such a big problem, and the part-time enforcement officers overworked, why do we still just have a part-time enforcement officer? If all of these issues are so hard to deal with? That's pretty much all I have to say. I just, I want to be clear that the council, that this council, is applying a different standard to the nuisance ordinance that exists today for other things in the city. That's it.
Thank you, Nick. I can speak for the council. I would just say that, you know, I don't think it was just anybody questioning the validity of the ordinance that was drafted, because I know our city council, our city attorney also weighed in on it in my research, asked all the council members. So, there was a great deal of discussion on the ordinance last week, and, you know, I respect the decision that the council made, based on all the information that they had. And I don't think it had anything about anybody thinking that the ordinance that was proposed, that your all's effort was not something that was of substance, and had, you know, valid points in it. You know, I don't think that was the reasoning behind the decision. I think it was every decision. So, we appreciate your all's input, and certainly, our city attorney spent a lot of time looking at it and making some additions to it. But, there was quite a bit of discussion last week before they made their decision. And I'll leave it at that unless any of the council members wants to revisit it, but we've had three or four meetings on it at this point. Okay. If I would like to ask both Chief Manley and Chief Cressick if they would introduce the newest hires in their department that I've called in to join me up front to even square an end.
This is Tommy Roosevelt. Tommy is a 24 veteran. He's been, he has 24 years of all unfortunate experience. He originally started with Hodgenville, and then went over to the Nelson County, or actually it was Nelson County Police before they merged with the Nelson County Sheriff's Department. And then transferred up to Louisville Metro Police Department where he finished out his career for about nine years with L and P D. He retired with the L and P D, and we have brought him back here with Barstown Police Department as a rehire. He lives here in Nelson County, and so we're very lucky to have him join the Barstown Police Department with the years and the experience that he has. Throughout his career, he's had numerous awards and accommodations. He's a veteran officer, has a lot of experience, well-known here in the community, well-known through the Barstown Police Department and Nelson County Sheriff. So, our officers, along with the Nelson County Sheriff, so very excited to have Tommy join us back here, and well-known in the community itself. So, we're very excited to have Tommy here with us.
Chief Manley?
I'd like to introduce Dennis Orr. Dennis is a retired sergeant from the Louisville Division of Fire. He retired late last year after working for them for 21 years. Dennis is an EMT and a hazmat tech. He's able to come into our system with just a minimal amount of training. We can cut him loose, where he could be an engineer for us, be a driver, a driver in a pump, on the pump handle, which is something we really need and stuff. So, we're really grateful for that. Dennis is a lifetime, a long-time resident of Barstown, along with his wife Kristy. They have one daughter, Bethany, who's a senior at Thomas Nelson. They can't be here tonight, they have a big track to be going on at Barstown High School. I'd like to welcome Dennis Orr to the floor.
Okay. Gentlemen, if you'll join me up here, we'll do the swearing in. We'd like to welcome both of you to the Barstown Police Department, Barstown Fire Department. If you raise your right hand and want to do the swearing in. I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue as citizen thereof, that I will faithfully execute, to the best of my ability, the position of police officer and/or firefighter according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not thought of doing with deadly weapons within this state, nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight and do it with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Congratulations and welcome to our... We heard the introduction from both the chiefs. I think we're very fortunate to have two local gentlemen with all this experience joining our teams, and I think they'll bring a lot of good work ethic and experience that we're looking for, and it's nice to have two more local gentlemen on this. It brings us both departments up to pretty much fully being staffed, which is something we've been working on for about the last year. So, it's a great day for all of us. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Can I say anything to the group this evening?
I just want to thank my wife for supporting me to come back into law enforcement when I was out for three and a half years. I really had no intention of coming back into law enforcement, but a couple of months ago, I decided to come by the station and say hi to one of my commanders. I've actually worked for a long, or under, the command staff that is here at this time. And I just want to thank them for giving me the opportunity to come back. I really didn't realize how much I missed it, as far as this community, and as far as the department itself. I, it's glory to me as far as how everybody has welcomed me to come back, and I just want to say thank you all.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for hiring me and giving me a chance to join the firefighting force again, and I look forward to serving the community, the residents of Barstown, as well as Nelson County. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is we have two representatives from Louisville Gas and Electric in KU. We have Jan Coleman and Andrea Schroeder. If you all recall, last week, we did a first reading on the ordinance for our gas franchise for the city of Barstown, and we'll do a second reading this evening. We have previously been in agreement with LGD for many years, so we will, I know we'll be hearing from them, and as soon as we do this second reading, they will be proposing a franchise agreement to the city. So, I'd like to ask Jan and Andrea if they would just kind of give us some background about the franchise agreement, and maybe a timetable of what we talked about, kind of in our new agreement.
Absolutely. So, I'm Jan Coleman, and I've been working on franchise for many years, and I've been here in Barstown many times. And we're proud to be your natural gas provider here in the city of Barstown. We have had a franchise since back in the 60s, and we're hoping to be able to renew that franchise with you. We do feel that we're on target to be able to begin with the new franchise by July 1st, if that's what the pleasure of the council is. And we wanted to be able to be here to answer any questions that you might have, so that you would be informed about what you were doing regarding the renewal of the gas franchise. So, are there any questions that maybe haven't been answered yet that perhaps I could help with? So, franchise is no longer than 20 years. There is the possibility of being able to look at that every year, to talk about the assessment percentage, and make changes if that's what the city may want to do. So, there's no reason not to go into it for a longer period, because you can have those options at whatever intervals that you would prefer to do. We already sent a potential template of what a normal franchise agreement looks like, and so we've got that language, and if there's anything different that the city, you know, would be interested in looking at, then we're open to that as well. Just an average franchise is typically a 3% franchise on grocery receipts. So, that is what the majority of our franchises assess is 3%.
I think you had said that our previous agreement did not have one, but you said, obviously, almost all your electric agreements had that, and now all your renewals on your gas are going to that.
Correct, and we have several additional that previously did not have an assessment that we have added over the past few years.
Any other questions with Jan?
This assessment gets returned back to the city. How has that been affecting that person's bill?
So, we're looking at 3% on the grocery receipts, so, you know, that would probably be looking at an average bill of, what, $100 or so, or maybe $120. So, we're talking about a small amount on residential bill, and then you want to consider any of your non-residential, you know, if their bills are some higher, and sort of looking at that 3% on any larger customers that you might have within the city's jurisdiction to get that consideration, or consider whether you want to have any consideration.
Yes, maybe we're also saying, y'all pass that straight on to the customer there?
Yes, we do. So, it is a straight pass-through, and it's listed as a separate line item on the billing invoices. So, it would show 3% on whatever the grocery receipts were to the city of Barstown. So, there would be a separate line item in with all of those other matters.
On the council, I think the city pays franchise on cable to the county throughout the county service.
It is common for there to be a franchise for any utility, actually.
So, that 3% pretty much runs for the length of the franchise agreement with no changes in that period of time?
With no changes unless you make that choice by vote on whatever interval. It could be annually, or it could be every five years, and we would just need the notice of that in fact.
And you can review as much as annually?
Yes.
In terms of the fee? The franchise agreement itself would be for 20 years.
20 years.
But you can adjust the fee annually?
And typically, the language would say with a maximum of 5%, because we've never had one that was greater than 5%, and that seems to be a reasonable amount. We have several that were forward.
Any other questions with Jan? Thank you, Jan and Andrea. I'm sure we'll be here in front of you, sitting down and having some more discussion on this as we go forward.
If there are additional questions, feel free to get in touch with us.
I don't think we have too many companies that have gas lines servicing Barstown, with maybe the exception of LGD, so...
We're hoping to get this worked out. That's our desire.
Sure, we'll be having some more discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Unusual situation, so I might play a bit on this.
You're right. John, you and your brother.
Okay. Next item on the agenda would be, anybody have any corrections or additions to the minutes of last week's working session meeting on May 1st? If not, we'll have a unanimous consent. Next item is under the financial report. In your package, our CFO, Tracy Hussey, we dropped a budget amendment for the current fiscal year 2018 budget. I let Tracy speak to these changes, and I think the last one we, back in October, was the last time we made some changes. And we always try to make these changes before the fiscal year ends. Chief, thank you, yes, and we've got several we need to bring for you all to consider this evening.
Yeah, of course, the major ones was purchasing the Newcomon building and the land. We had to show that. And then the air packs, where we took a lease out, we had to show the revenue and the expenditure. So, that was a wash. The land is also a wash, because it comes into cable and it goes right back out of cable. The police department, Chief Tracy, needed a replacement vehicle, so that was the reason for lowering some of the expenditures. And then, of course, the E911 last year, or during audit last year, Linda, they told us that it was no longer a transfer of funds, because they're no longer part of the city of Barstown, so we have to make them a general expense. A lot of it, as far as finance with occupational tax, it looks like it's trending, so that's what I was using for that. And there was a install fees that we did not budget at all on the revenue, but it's showing up in the financials. Cable's been hitting pretty hard as far as the getting it out to our county customers, so there was an increase in contract. But other than that, it's pretty straightforward. Any other questions?
I guess one comment, you and I talked about this earlier, is it shows the fire department, one million dollars for Newton property, is an expense on the cable. We call it cable net now, because we put the internet and everything together, or whatever. I'd just like to reflect in minutes that we're not, even though it might show for county purposes an expense, it's really a loan from the cable entity fund to the fire department that will be paid back. So, let that in minutes. You know, I know about business accounting, I know government accounting's a whole lot there, and I know you talked to Linda on it, and I just, if we reflect that in minutes, so we're sure that it's a loan, that it's accountable.
Any other questions of Tracy on these adjustments, or the amendment to our fiscal year budget?
Now, I do want to say that the department has been really well this year, because I didn't see a whole lot of things that needed the attention that in years past we've had to look at.
Okay. We have the, we've been following that, so we're going to introduce the actual first reading of the 2002 budget amendment. Council members, please, introduce that for us.
Mayor, if I may be of order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2018-12, an ordinance admitting and adopting as amended ordinance for the city of Barstown by the ordinance of this year, July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. If you haven't read it.
In summary.
In summary?
Yes. Ordinance number B 2018 amended budget FY 2017-18, an ordinance admitting and adopting as amended. Ordinance number B 2017-15, the city of Barstown's budget ordinance for fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, whereas an annual budget for fiscal year 2017-18 was adopted by the city council of Barstown on October 24th, 2017, and whereas there have been unanticipated changes in both revenue and expenditures during that period of time, now therefore being ordained by the city of Barstown that section 1, the annual budget for fiscal year 2017-18 be and is hereby amended as follows. One, general fund increased anticipated revenues from $10,733,530 to $11,172,290, and increased authorized expenditures from $10,542,730 to $10,637,875. Two, combined utilities funds increased anticipated revenues from $43,59,500 to $44,859,500, and increased expenditures from $42,741,641 to $44,546,41. Section 2, the annual budget is hereby amended and attached here 2, reflecting the above referenced amendments to the general and combined utilities funds, revenues and expenditures that comprise the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget for the city of Barstown. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publications required by law. This summary was certified by me, Tim Butler, city attorney.
Okay, thank you, Tim. That's the first reading, so we'll have a vote at the next meeting, or the second meeting. I have a second meeting this evening for the B 2018-11 gas franchise.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number B 2018-11, Commonwealth Kentucky, city of Barstown, an ordinance creating a franchise for the erection, laying, and maintenance of natural gas facilities and the pertinent facilities and equipment in, along, and across the public ways, roads, streets, alleys, and other public places in the city of Barstown, Kentucky, for furnishing and selling natural gas by means of said facilities, and for providing for the sale of said franchise, whereas the city of Barstown, city, wishes to ensure that natural gas service continues to be furnished to its citizens in a reliable and efficient manner, and whereas the city is aware of the provision of such services required the continued use of public streets, ways, alleys, and other public places. Whereas the franchise granted to and acquired by Louisville Gas and Electric Company on April 8th, 1986, and under which that utility provides such services, expired by its terms April 8th, 2006, whereas the city wishes to provide for the sale of the new franchise for the benefit of the citizenry given effect to section 96.010 of Kentucky revised statute, now therefore be ordained as follows. Section 1, an exclusive franchise, franchise, to be used, to use the city's public rights of way as described in the franchise agreement attached to this ordinance is hereby created. Section 2, the franchise created by this ordinance shall be in accordance with applicable requirements of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and chapter 424 of Kentucky revised statutes, as well as any applicable city ordinances. Section 3, the franchise created by this ordinance shall be awarded to the highest and best bidder, as shall be determined by the city in its sole discretion. In awarding the franchise, the city shall consider the technical, managerial, and financial qualifications of the bidder to perform its obligations under the franchise. Section 4, the winning bidder of the city shall negotiate, execute, and be found by a franchise agreement with terms identical to, or substantially identical to, the franchise agreement referenced in section 1 above and attached here 2. Such agreement contains terms that are fair and reasonable to the city, to the purchaser of the franchise, and to the patrons of the utility. KRS, section 96.010. Such franchise agreement shall take effect on July 1st, 2018, to allow the city and the winning bidder to develop appropriate procedures for identifying and reviewing the natural gas concerning entities within the city's corporate limits. Section 5, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 6, any section, clause, line, paragraph, or part of this ordinance or attached agreement, should any section, clause, line, paragraph, or part of this ordinance or the attached agreement be held unconstitutional or invalid for any reason, the same shall not affect the remainder of this ordinance or the attached agreement is applicable. Section 7, time is of the essence in carrying out the terms and provisions of this ordinance and the franchise created herein. Section 8, this ordinance shall become effective from and after its passage in publications required by law.
Okay, Tim. This is the second reading for this, so I would ask for a motion then to approve ordinance number B 2018-11, as read. So moved. Motion, Councilman Williams, that's a second. Second, the Councilman goes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify. Excuse me. If anybody's saying aye, we'll do individual votes, starting with Councilman Douglas.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Next, we always have this section in our, I think, reports of committee and staff, and I know with our council members, all of you all serve on different committees, but it's not always when each of you all get to hear from some of those department heads of committees, maybe they're not involved with. So, since we, next couple of weeks, it looks like we have some time in the meetings, so I've asked some of our department heads, like happen to be here the nights, to give an update on where they are, as we're getting towards the end of our fiscal year, and if you all may have any questions, as we're going into our budget discussion in the next few weeks. So, I felt like it was good if we could care for these department heads to give us a kind of update on where they are. So, Chief Manley, you drew the short stick, you get it first.
He was the first to respond.
No, he was the first to respond.
She threatened us. She would hunt us down.
Hi, just to let the council know, some of the things that are going on, our department has to make or some while ago with the hiring of a firefighter corps. It does bring us up to full staff, what we're live for, as I said a couple meetings ago. We run in Battoon, Battoon is a 24-hour shift. P1 has five, P2 has four, P3 has five. So, we're in pretty good shape with our staffing by the way, and stuff I'm happy to say.
Next thing on our agenda is, along with the police chief, I've gotten, we have a company that is donating these bags to us. We get calls all the time, I'm sure City Hall gets calls all the time, what people can do with their own medication. The police department has a drop box for pills, but there's no place for liquid medicine. These bags here, we will be handing them out to anyone that comes up with one of them. They're free to us, so they'll be free to the public. With this, you can either put 45 pills in it, six ounces of liquid, or six patches.
With this, you can either put forty-five pills in it, uh, six ounces of liquid, or six patches like it. Some type of pain patch or something. And then you add a little bit of water, you seal it up, and it can go into your trash. Checked with Justice, Justice, checked with landfill, we are okay, these are environmentally safe. Like I said, they are free to us, uh, I will be giving the police chief something later tomorrow, so for them to have. We can even bring some up to private city hall if you like and so forth. Think they need some, we'll be more than glad to pass them out. Uh, next thing, and I'm glad I get to go first, and we are having a blood drive called Battle of the Badges. This is the police department's version of the fire department along with EMS. So it's going to be July twenty-sixth from five to noon at the city hall. Well, since I mentioned it first, please, if you go donate, say you're donating. There is a prize for the, the department that gets the most donations.
What's the name of that again?
July twenty-sixth, noon to five. And I believe all the people working at city hall, we can maybe get off a little early to go donate with help.
One would be sent up.
Uh, KCR. And then moving on, uh, we currently have fourteen volunteers that are in a recruit class of, of right now. They will be cut loose here in a month or two to help make some runs and along with their trainings. Uh, we have two new volunteers that come to us from another departments, and they are ready to go, they will get loose as soon as we get some gear for them. As of today, our total number of runs, we've made a hundred sixty-seven fire runs, three hundred and thirty-four EMS runs, for a total of five hundred and one runs since January one. Uh, this same time last year, we had a hundred fifty-seven fire runs and three hundred and seventy-five EMS runs, for a total of five thirty-two. So we're down on our EMS runs a little bit, but we're up on our fire runs. Uh, we've made some changes on our fire, our, excuse me, on our EMS response, that's, I believe, why the number is down, even though nationwide EMS runs are up. And we'll, we'll continue tweaking that also as we go along and stuff, help out with EMS. Uh, our response time from time we're dispatched to time we're out the door has gone from two minutes and twenty-eight seconds, uh, to a minute and fifty seconds. So we're getting out the door thirty-eight seconds quicker than we were this time last year. So that's, that's a very good improvement. What I'm most happy about is our response time from time we do say we're on the road, we're going, to the time we get on the scene has gone from eight minutes and twenty-four seconds to five minutes and six seconds this time last year. So it's three minutes, eighteen seconds, we're getting there quicker. Life and death, it's a, it's a lot of time to save and stuff, but we're very proud of that. Uh, also, since the first of the year, we've done a total of one thousand one hundred and eleven hours of training, that's for the department wide, my training. But we're, we're going to even improve that even more, I, I put out to all the people. We're going to be training just about every day for we, for now, except for some days, so some people will kind of give them a break from that. There's so much training that we need to have, so much training we have to have. And I think it's just good that if we did two hours of training a day, it would help out quite a bit, so we're working, head training quite a bit. Uh, the next on my agenda, I asked the media not to put this out, I will mention it. Our newest ambassador to the fire department was born last week. Uh, we will be receiving her in eight weeks from now, that's a donation, I think. I have pictures, if anybody wants to see, I've been going around city hall like a proud official. She will be trained to do different activities at schools, we will be taking her to schools. Anytime we go to school, it's first thing the kids ask, where's the dog, where's the dog? So she will be trained to interact with kids and so forth at school. This, I'm paying for all this out in pocket and so forth, and certainly any cost, firefighters, they're going to chip in with food. Uh, we have the vets going to provide better care and food and so forth. I just think it would be a good PR, part of the city of Barstown to have. Uh, what we're going to do, that's why I don't want it out in the media right now, second, third graders at all city schools are going to be doing a naming podcast to pick the name for the dog. Uh, once that, we get the dog and we get the name, that group will have, will have a pizza party for them, and that'd be the first group that the dog actually does. But we're getting the school kids involved and stuff too, of course. But we're, we're very excited about that. I know everybody at city hall has decided they want a doggy door foot in between the firehouse and everything at city hall, so they want her around.
Where would we be doing this naming, they, the schools will be out here.
Yeah, I've talked to all the schools and they're going to be doing it, not Facebook live, but there's some type of way that they can contact all the parents for second graders and third graders. And say, you know, submit us a name, and then they're going to pick most popular name that they have, and then submit it to us. It can be done on a cognitive account.
I thought our dog was named Sparky.
Uh, Sparky has been one of the names that we've gotten. Uh, Sergeant Dottie's been another one. Uh, Dottie, what was Hannah's, Paulson, like Paul's, the dog. Mrs. Mrs. Sparky's been one that we've got. We're just trying to get a few names people are getting. So everybody's pretty excited about the dog.
So, the council, any questions, Chief Madely?
I, I've got, uh, a question or a comment first. There's still about fourteen days of school left, so you could probably get them to submit a name now, anything.
Well, what we're, I guess I should have said, what we're doing, we're kind of getting people talking about it. That's why I didn't want it out in the media. You're going to start seeing in the standard, our patch, and underneath it's going to say she's coming July tenth. That's, that's over the day, we're hoping to unveil the dog and stuff, and we want people going, who's coming July tenth to the fire department? And kind of the whole public thinking, what is going on, what's, what's happened to it, by, who's coming and so forth. Along with the, with the papers and the TV stations and so forth, right, and a little campaign like that.
Uh, the question I have is, uh, you gave us some good news as relates to response time. Uh, what contributed to the decreases?
Um, I don't, I'm not really sure. I think morale has picked up tremendously from what I understand with the fire department. Everybody understands that, you know, we still have a job to do regardless of what's happened in the past and so forth and stuff. I, I made a comment the other day that our fire corps had fit in so well, passed the crew, and they were all laughing, talking, and joking, and cutting up. I said, it's like you've been with us for ten years. And just, I see that on the firefighters. You know, just their, their attitude, they're so much better. That's, that's the only thing I, I can, I can agree with you about.
I thought maybe you took the governor off, but.
No.
On that, first, I guess we're going to review the budget here too, and he's, I think he's done a good job on the budget, just made it. It's a, uh, a hundred thousand dollars less than last year, and we're still adding on seventy-six thousand dollars in debt payment for this year. And, and forty-five thousand dollars of dispatching has been added on that wasn't on last year's.
I did say at the last meeting that we did turn down for the grant for the new fire agent in Haver, but we were notified a couple of days later, the grant people had made a mistake, and we are still in the grant for that. If, if we don't get it, it's, it's not the end of the world, what we're going to do is, that's engine one that we're wanting to replace, we have engine two. We can move engine two over as a person of the town for that. These are, that is, it's, it's not going to be the end of the world, we don't need to, we, we can budget down the road later and we have a replacement for that. I, I do have in the budget a replacement for our two thousand and six expedition, that's a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. I started to show probably a bit, other than where we're going to change it.
Anything else, Chief Madely? Okay, Shay, you've got a tough act to follow with the dog and.
I know, you know, chief, I'm taking it from you, I'm totally, totally, I'm doing my best. Um, we have a lot going on, it's that time of year with HRV, so we have so many COEs coming in, they're coming in record numbers. And, um, at this point, last year, we were around sixteen-eight. At this point, we've done with any kind of contributions and conditional uses and other types of provisional basically repairs, we've hit over a hundred and fifty at this point. So we've done quite a bit of doubling, and we're pretty excited about that, but there's a lot going on, it's all great things, and a lot's going on at Barstown. Um, sign permits, they're also going, they're going really strong, we have lots of businesses coming to our community, that's always exciting. Um, that's a lot of things coming in, you know, new faces, new things, and basically just a lot of permits going through there. Um, the city archives is doing absolutely amazing. We have a whole slew of volunteers that are coming in to help digitize our community's pictures, you know, historic information, newspaper articles, things of that nature. And most recently, actually tonight, there is a preview of Downstream, which is a, um, it's a TV show based on Kentucky's liquids or spirits, as they like to call it. And they focused on Barstown and, um, the Bourbon Festival. And the city archives and I helped get some historic photographs together that are part of that, and so that the city archives are credited for that. So we're really excited and proud about that. And the puppies.
So just that this is a preview from that, is that going to be released like in the state or local, or what would that form release of that? Is that a documentary?
It is, it is, and I'm not sure exactly, I'd like that to come here tonight, I'll be going back to that, but he can give me that information when I get, and I'll get that to you. We're excited.
As far as, I, I've, I've talked to the guy just a minute ago, it's a, a series, a documentary series, and one of those episodes is specified on the Bourbon, or the Barstown area due to the, uh, the Beach Fork, uh, is that what it's called, Beach Fork? Area, uh, having to do so much with the Bourbon industry here in town, and he did film here in the Bourbon, uh, festival.
Anything else, Shay?
I'd like to make, yeah, Shay, or maybe it's just me. Do you see the value of property in the historic district, the demand for historic properties?
Absolutely, thank you, Joe, for pointing on that. It is, we, we hit a pinnacle point, and I love to talk about, thank you, I appreciate that a lot. Back in the beginning of HRV, when it was formulated here, I know there was a lot of investment, and there wasn't necessarily always a great return on that investment, but historic property is expensive to maintain. Now, we're seeing investments turn double or threefold for that. If you invest in our historic properties, and you renovate them up to code, and have them to our standards, you're seeing their property values increase astronomically. The property values within our district just keep going up, and it's a very steady incline of that that's happening within our community. Something else we're just really extremely proud of, so all those years of hard work preserving this amazing building downtown is finally coming to fruition, we're going to see that. Thank you, Joe.
Anything else to the chair?
Yeah, I have one question.
Um, congrats on, on everything, because you worked so hard. Um, but I do have a question in reference to the keeping of records for the historical district. Are we, um, able to, uh, with all the homes that we have, how are we going out and viewing those homes? Are we, are we doing that like a specific number a year, or, um, just to make, make sure that they're keeping with the historical, um, uh, basis of, of what they're supposed to do, what it's supposed to be? Are, are we, um, doing so many a year, or we're, we're not able to tackle that right now?
Oh, no, well, essentially, I, I basically have patrols between me and the city code enforcement officer. We make rounds, every project that comes through, we double check that off to make sure we visit the site, to make sure it's basically completed properly and up to par. Um, and so basically, it's a follow-through, you know, traveling to different areas, so many per week and so many per month that we do. So we definitely monitor that as closely as we possibly can. And I do have one more thing there, I'm so sorry. Um, so the last of my workshop series for this year, I can't wait almost to run about this, is, uh, Thursday at six o'clock, and it's historic landscaping. Mr. Robbie Smith is going to be putting it on an area of plants, it's kind of an exciting twist, and historic buildings, you can landscape appropriately and learn about historicals, so we're excited. We've had a lot of interest, a lot of people have signed up, but I would just love for anyone to attend that could, it's free and open to everybody.
Is that the coke that the people?
And I think, uh, follow to Councilman Koch for this question, I think a lot of the records have been digitized going back when Ted Bogart first came on. We didn't have a lot of computerized records, a lot of files and all that, but now much of that has been digitized. Uh, and it makes it much more accessible for Shay, she's got to go back and pull a, pull a, an account, like, if there was a question on a property, whether, you know, something was done properly. She can now pull those minutes and pull those applications, uh, from the computer, whereas before it was, uh, it was a huge amount of files.
It's all paper, and we had to go through each piece of paper individually again.
There's been a lot of improvement in that part of it over the last probably six years, I guess.
Absolutely.
Thank God for technology.
Yes, absolutely.
I've been involved, I get a few phone calls from time to time, and now I can ask Shay, and she can find it. It's, uh, before it was, uh, different, it was, it was other meanings.
Thank you. And I, at the event, before I came over here, I just wanted to say too, um, the tourism director from Georgetown had the most amazing things to say about our public restaurants. And how that she was so excited about what we had and things of that nature downtown, and the beauty of our downtown, and she talked to me for probably forty-five minutes about basically the uniqueness of our community, but also the things that you all have allowed to be implemented to basically serve the public. And she was just really excited and proud of what we had done, so I would like to share that constantly.
What was her name?
Um, it was Lori Stewart, I believe, Sandra, I apologize, it starts with an S and a L, same. She was amazingly complimentary though of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shay. Okay, Jeff Miller, uh, next is probably super technical.
Follow all this, I'm just unknown, but that means we're doing our job, so. I'm asking for another lineman this year. We got the truck last year, we had it in last year, we took it out, and we're asking for it again this year. We've got lots of locates and, uh, streetlights is the biggest thing, but we're a small crew when we have an injury and then somebody takes off, we're, it's just got a couple of people. I filled in a lot of these positions there, and I can still do it, I just don't do it as much. So we're asking for that. Along with that, uh, we added in Justice's budget on some lights downtown, going LED, that's what we talked about in the committee meetings. And, uh, we got some pricing for the streetscape lights down there. And, uh, we can go LED retro, what we have, and, uh, so we've put some money in her budget for that. And also taken certain sections of town and just updating the lighting and getting them all up. So it cuts down on the cost, the first costs are a little high, but we save on the electric. We save on not having to, to maintain them. The LED lights last around ten years, as long as you, storms don't hit them. For our other lights, they only lasted two years. All the downtown lights are starting to fail now, they're about ten years old. So we're having to spend a lot to fix each fixture, and just one of those fixtures down there is eleven hundred dollars, so, uh, quite expensive. So that's probably the, the, the big thing on the lighting. Then, uh, last year we'd had in there about our.
Can I ask a question real quick? I think what he's speaking to is that rather than just waiting to put an LED in when one light goes out, I think he's going to start phasing in areas of town. Rather than have these onesies and twosies, you know, have an LED here and then three, you know.
And also having a street light and not a security light, so it will have a different light pattern. It will help light the whole street versus what it needs for the house, or, we've been working.
Your crew, I think you said, his crew's a consistent four, that's the entire, our crew, so it's short this one man, if somebody's on vacation, it's difficult to run an electric department, suddenly city outside with three people. If you're going to grow, grow, and all the new industry, stuff that's going on, that's the point, to maybe, maybe make that request, which is in your budget for this year.
So then the next part of it is our conversion. So we started the, a couple of years ago to redo our Barton substation as we have our other two. And after we got the plans and talked with KU, they come back and said, well, Barton's, we got to do a conversion. So we got to convert our station also. So we're at a four thousand volt station, and they want to go to a twelve thousand volt. And, uh, so the whole south end of town is on the four KV. And so we have to change every transformer on those, uh, insulators, poles, and all that to get, bring it up to a twelve KV standard. They're a dual voltage transformer, so they cost more, but they work at four KV until we're ready to do the swap over. ready to swap over, so they'll be a big outage at certain points next year. And then by doing that, also, we got four areas that's in there, I think you'll see the south end, Rogan's, Reardon, Hurston, Hurston area. And by getting rid of those, we, we get rid of having to have dual transformers. They cost about a third more than what a regular transformer does. It also gets everything to same voltage, so it's a safety factor. So now these guys aren't putting the wrong transformer in the wrong areas, they're all young and new and they don't know the old areas, so before I leave, that's what I want to do, is get rid of all them, then get rid of all our contaminated transformers. We've got about 28 left and they're all in these pockets. So that, we won't have to keep records and have PCB people coming in and EPA and all that, so it serves a couple of purposes by doing this conversion. And then the substation, KU don't know where they're going to put their substation now, Barton turned them down, so they've got to find another piece of property near us to put a substation. We offered our property, they don't think it's big enough and it's waterlogged, so there's a lot of discussion that we've been having with KU and see where we go, but we want to go ahead and do and be prepared for the conversion. By doing that, we can transfer all the load to the other substations and then we can take Barton out and be able to build a brand new one, so that's all of the long range plans over the next year and year. We've got a SCADA system that goes in that station, so that's all part of it. And then the next little piece of the puzzle is an outage management system. And it'll, it'll have where they can call, it'll call them back, it'll predict where the outage happened at when it comes in. We've got the automatic meter readers and then the substation, this ties everything in, will know exactly how many people are out and an ETA type thing. Just, just a little technology in the down system. Then it's just the regular stuff. We've got some piece of property out there and we've all talked about and some improvements of comprehensive planning, what to do with it. Anything you need to add?
No, I'm not. Okay, the question for Jeff?
Jeff, the, as far as the outage management system and the SCADA, with the new system, are those both budgeted items for this coming year?
Yes.
The SCADA and the outage management? And on the Barton substation, I knew that they were trying to acquire some property next to them and I think there's some rental units over there that they swung out there too.
Well, they're talking about the storage buildings that are right next to it and maybe purchasing that and making that there. We told them that there's a piece of property a tiny pass and wouldn't make it too awful difficult that we can't get the electric back to where it needs to be. But we're kind of separated, there are transformers on Barton's and they feed us off of a breaker that feeds the red light. And then if we, the new thing is that we want to combine and we'll take two breakers and make that two breakers and then they can feed Barton with that and we can feed ours with that and we can do some stuff out of the system.
Need more room right there to do that. So you don't, we don't know what's happening on their end as far as the property. So if they have to locate somewhere else, is that going to, is that going to affect our budgeting any?
They will still have to get to us.
They'll still have to come to us. We won't have to do anything else to get to them. Okay. That's, that was a.
Yes, and a question. But there might be some joint things that we want to do that will help us along with helping them. And so the whole station itself, so they pretty much own the transformer, we own the breakers, two dollars of the station. When we can align, it'll be just kind of a split in the middle, they have two, we have two, who purchased the best one.
If I can interject a little bit of that, we had already kind of planned on doing some repair work on the substation anyways, you know, it's the older breakers, older bus work, so we were going to go ahead and budget to do some of that work anyways before KU approached us on doing the conversion, you know, so that was kind of, so that's kind of been on hold, but we maybe, you know, that's kind of keeping us back from updating some of that, getting, you know, updated breakers and kind of the SCADA system depending on what KU wanted to do, but we are, you know, looking at doing some upgrades to the station on our own.
Is the SCADA system going to require any new personnel as far as to them that turkeys, you're going to do that, right?
Well, we already, we already have it for the other two stations. It would be adding a, a component, a smart system at that substation, wherever we talk to the newer breakers, but we already have it for.
So we use the new AMI system also, the national meters, and they're all, and we've got a big screen TV up there and we monitor and the current monitors and monitor monitors. And we can see outages throughout the day if it comes up, that'll flag it. We see where people are stealing electric, we caught several of them now and they're really, I think they're, the old system that doesn't work, it'll tell us that they're stealing electric. We know how to date on what they're using. There's some other stuff that would be nice to get out to the public, but it's really expensive, but then they could chart a graph, see in how much usage they have and get rid of the Januaries that they say that we are pricing in January, we have. It just, it shows you where you're using it at, so.
Okay, we cut Segway in there. Staffager, you guys think they had on cable there that side?
The major thing that you want to address is expansion, you know, expanding out of the county. With fiber of the home, that was what we're doing for TV and internet. The, what we're kind of going to finish up the year on last fall, we had focused on the Boston area, Wilson Creek Road, Madison, Thompson Domes, Hurricane Hills Lake, if anyone knows where that is, it's north of, north of Boston. There was some clearance issues that held us back. We're now, we had the winter, so we're kind of going to finish the year building out that area and then, you know, kind of get us lined up to do some analysis and depending on what gets approved to continue expanding next budget, kind of, you know, kind of reanalyze everything, kind of see where, where it would fall for next budget as far as the next areas. The other major thing that I wanted to bring up is we're getting a lot of traction on commercial fiber locations, like Chris had mentioned, the higher, higher contract services, a lot of that's some residential and then some commercial. We're getting a lot of traction on needing, commercial locations needing bigger bandwidth, medical facilities, all of this, a lot of the distillers are coming to us, so that's taken a lot of time and effort to get a lot of those connections going. And then I'll maybe tee it up for a home is the next, other thing I want to bring up is analog conversion, we're starting to run scrolls, that's two through 22, our Lifeline Basic. It is what we call analog, it means you can get it with the old style tube TV. We, a few years ago, we did that for the expanded basic packets, 23 through 78, where you had to have a flat screen TV or a little converter box, but it's, we're one of the very rare few systems that still have that really outdated analog, you know, so that would allow us to get more bandwidth, more HD channels and kind of squeeze more into it than just those 20 channels that we're doing now for the Lifeline Basic.
Yeah, but we're very excited about new space. We're very appreciative. I know Jeff Diller's been asking for this for, I don't know, since I can remember when I started almost 20 years ago, so it's finally happened, everybody's excited about what we can do with that space, but we're really appreciative and thank you for making that happen. We've, we have kind of seen that as a limitation factor for where we're going to go and what we want to do, but other than that, on the other front, we've got things we've been doing on the inside plant and the head end, upgrading equipment, things like that to meet the needs. And outside plant, splitting nodes and things like that to keep up with the growth and the usage. Stop right there.
Do you have a question for Eric on home? Some of the stuff is splitting nodes and writers and transformers and stuff, unless we might not have enough time to answer. Y'all doing a good job following that. The other question, the next thing we want to see more of the department has come, you know, another day. Got the minutes from, or excuse me, yes, the minutes from cable TV, program the committee, if y'all have a chance to read those, pretty self-explanable, shortening pretty much one item, make them, make them deal with. Going down, any, any of the council have anything, any of your comments, rate the council this evening?
Yes, I do. I'd like to bring all the like to have the cemetery committee, committee, eight thirty for one. You're welcome.
The only servant questions?
We could.
Okay.
I don't think we have a quorum there, council chairman.
We're supposed to. It gives the rest of y'all.
I'll volunteer not to come, so.
It's all the big.
Okay, any, any other council members have anything? If not, we've got some cemetery deeds, Michael Williams, one grade, Douglas and Deb with Osborne, two grades, and Nancy Morell, one grade, approve them by unanimous consent. And under announcements, I think, Chief, you and I got to do a walk tomorrow morning.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty AM for the farmer's market, the Barton's, the Pet School System is, I think it's based on, the kids are getting ready to start doing their testing, so they're doing exercising and getting out in fresh air, it's kind of help them, stimulate them and they're getting more exercise, helps them to do a better job on their testing, is the way Marjorie Bradford explained it to me, so Chief and I'll be leading the walk tomorrow morning at seven thirty. I'm not taking the test with them, but we'll walk.
Getting, getting set for K-Rep?
K-Rep, right.
Hope it doesn't rain.
It's all right.
It'll be there.
We'll do this.
Anything else? Nothing else, I asked for a motion for adjournment.
Yes, I'm great.
Oh, we are, we've been about unanimous consent.
Okay, all right. I was, I was worried, but I wasn't.
Jeff, could have been a motion for adjournment. Motion that council, hopefully, second with Councilman Kelly, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, thanks, staff, they're like.